Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Sandy, could please read our mission statement and take hold. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Board member Candace?
Here.
Or Cunningham, I'm sorry.
Here.
Board member Gillis?
Here.
Board member Mashawn?
Here.
Board member Steyer?
Here.
Board member Sutton?
Here.
Board member Teltow?
Here.
And board member Fortunite here in the Forum. We also do have our Mr. Representative Joseph Leceau here. Unfortunately, I live with an issue for his absence at public notice.
Thank you. Before we approve our agenda, we need to make a change. We will be removing item, this would be 7F. So I will be looking for a motion for an amended agenda.
I'm going to make a motion, but I'm going to ask for an additional amendment, Ms. Mashawn, for item 7E. I want to motion to approve the agenda with item E being removed, tabled to our next meeting. Apparently, there is something we're going to get tomorrow where these candidates are going to be
On the audio.
That we're going to be able to watch.
Yeah.
So we can watch a video and then discuss it next meeting vote at the same time.
Okay, so we will have to do both then at the same time?
Yeah.
Because I believe it gets real close there. We have to have our voted.
I think it's March 3rd or March 10th. I think is what the date is.
Okay. Anybody have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, so Margaret, would you state? So we're removing also E. Okay, so we're not?
Well, you, no, it's the, we didn't even have to amend the agenda. You took that item off before the
Oh, okay.
It was approved. So I'm making a motion
Okay, got it.
To approve the agenda with the amendment that item E be tabled to the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
It's important.
Any discussion?
Sarah.
Sarah, did it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda. Someone? Do I have a second?
For?
Mr. Longson? That was Candace.
There were no questions from the previous board member that brought to my attention or any of the claims and accounts of January. As far as personnel report, we only have one new hire listed, Corey Moore, the JV basketball, assuming baseball coach. And then you have Pappy, you also have the district head comp MD for the last couple of weeks.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Longson? This Wednesday is comp day, right? For
This Wednesday is comp day.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first presentation of this evening will be your proposed overnight extended trip request. Mrs. Christensen.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Mrs. Christensen. I am the deputy advisor here at Richmond Community Schools. And last year, we took some students down to states on the deputy state competition. This year, we had 12 students compete at districts in December, and three of them have made it to states. Our one of our student board members, Liz, she is one of them. They will be going down. And I'm trying to get approval for the overnight accommodations. It's March 13th, 14th, and 15th, as well as just your approval for the overnight before taking three students. So there's only three students going down.
Anybody have any questions for her?
Where are you guys going? Um, it's at Honeyton Place. It's at Oval Hall.
Oh, okay.
Honeyton Place. Downtown.
It's nice.
It's hard not to call it Oval Hall.
I know.
Is it just you going or do you have parents going? Is it just the three students?
Just me and the three. That's how it went last year too. But Ms. Borwick and Ms. Zabel did come down one of the nights. Just had pizza. And just brainless is, this is for her. This is part of the, when you take hits to the state.
Yes, in the function 113, there is a academic state championship. It's like for quite a, this would be an example of the charge that account.
So then she just gets, Ms. Zabel to
Yeah, we would do the same thing as far as if there's hotel accommodations or the pricing, food, et cetera. Like we do with everything.
Thank you.
This, but in particular, I guess though I think they charge for the CT.
I was just going to say.
Because it involves our CT funding, so.
Well, yeah, because they're required to do Competitions part of your CT.
It would be function 127 rather than 113. But yeah, it's, it's in the same round.
Okay.
That we would approve it like we do the others.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay. Good luck and let us know how they do.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our 2025-26 preschool tuition and childcare rates. Ms. Longson.
Well, good evening. Tonight, it's been a while since I was talking about preschool and childcare rates to the Board of Education. But this year, we took time to spend looking at cost analysis of the program in terms of what revenue we bring in and what revenue or expenses we have for the program. In the past, last time we were here, we were a very different landscape of the state level with fewer GSRP sections, the dollars coming from the state. So tonight's presentation is really about the tuition-based preschool program as well as our current childcare rates for AM and PM and half days. This is currently our rates. We charge currently for a three-year-old program, Monday through Friday. They run an AM and a PM session that's available. It's $1,350. For our four-year-old tuition-based preschool, it's a five-day-a-week half-day program. We used to run an all-day program. Those students primarily have been doing the GSRP program now. And that we were charging $2,050. And as you can see on the Great Star readiness, we don't charge anything for those students. And then our childcare rate is in, is $4.50. Back in February of 2020, it seems like an eternity, eternity, because it was pre, I can't think about it. The board approved these rates. So we haven't looked at or adjusted the rates since February of 2020. So it would have been the 2021 school year that these rates went into effect. So we've had the same rates for much five years. What's before you is a proposal to increase the rates. And what you see here on the screen is projected costs and projected increases. So if you look at the first column where it says projected costs, and this is a three-year-old tuition. When we look at the number of days a teacher works, if we look at a 10 to 1 ratio, in this case, you see I'm projecting eight students in that class with that revenue of eight students. It would, the cost per eight students is about $1,454. With that current rate, we are, we're not breaking even or covering our cost for that. When you look at column two, it's when we go over that 10 number, which means we start really, really seriously considering about 78. If this looks up, we can technically go up to 20 students in a three-year-old program with two adults in the classroom. But in this scenario, I use the example of 18. You add the teacher and the teacher aide together, totals about $22,000. Again, this is a three-day-a-week AM program. That's for each session. So if someone is working the AM and PM, this cost would double. This is just for one section. You can see the difference between our projected student cost and what we currently charge. If you take the average and looking at those two, which is, this is not an exact science. There's a projection in all of it. I don't necessarily rhyme or reason that this is the way we figure it. It's what reasonably makes sense. If we look at our averaging, we have 14 students in a classroom. The average cost per student is about $1,635. So the recommendation before you is to move our three-year-old tuition preschool for next year to be $1,650, assuming we're covering the cost of two adults in the room and about 14 kids in the classroom. If it's less than 14, our expenses are going to exceed our revenue. If it's more than 14 kids, our revenue is going to exceed our expenses. So it's just going to give you all our overhead. When you look at the four-year-old program, which is a five-day-a-week half-day program, the teacher costs go up because they are working longer contracts. I do want to point out, when we looked at this, the, this group of these programs did not have a collective bargaining agreement. They have a collective bargaining agreement that identifies what their rates of pay are for next year. And this projection assumes those rates of pay. So if we look at, again, a four-year-old program, it's actually going to 12 to 1. Again, I'm looking at roughly that 10 numbers what we target. The cost for eight kids is about $1,990. We're charged around $2,050. If we do the average, you're about 17, or 18 students, you're about $1,700. Look at the average, you're at $2,400, which is what our projected student costs. So kind of in the middle ground, to raise it to about $22,500. When I look at the projected cost, this is what the cost looks like if you run the childcare programs, AM. Again, we base this on current averages of how many kids attend AM, how many staff we need. We're total about $125,000 in childcare section. The projected revenue that we get from the AM, we average about 30 students who are there for about 45 minutes in the morning. We open at 6:30, 7:45, 7:50. Majority of our students are there for about 45 minutes. On full days, we average about 70 students there for two hours. And then on half days, we average about 47 students that are there for 4.5 hours. So if you look at, again, you look at the total revenue that's collected at that one, project, they have $133,000. If we were to raise it to $5, it would be about $147,000. When you look at the cost, that's, this cost is just payroll. It is not supplies, it's not materials for the programs, et cetera. Which is why when you look at the difference in childcare, part of that is to pay for those other supplies that are needed in the program. Before you, the summary of the recommendation to move the three-year-old from $1,350 to $1,650, the four-year-old from $2,050 to $22,500, childcare from $4 an hour to $5 an hour. The childcare registration fees have been the same since I started here in 2014. So in 11 years, costs have gone up. This is the one-time fee we charge and basically holds students' spots in the program. This fee, the way we budget it is if the preschool has eight kids, we take eight times that 50. That's automatically their starting budget for supplies for that program. So we just take this fee and move it to the program. So it doesn't go really, which goes to the general fund, it's really targeted for all those programs. We'll be moving to $30 to $60. Again, there's no exact science to this, but there's a projection of what, we know what our anticipated payroll costs are going to be. So we're trying to at least cover. This has never been about paying the money or bringing revenue, at least since I've been here. To sup, use this program to supplement other programs, about costing breaking even in the district. As I said, we've been five years without any changes in costs.
If there, yeah, if there was a child that is in a preschool program and then also in the childcare program, do they have to pay both registration fees?
In the past, they have.
Okay. And what, so you had a breakdown about what the other costs are for, like what, what, is there a breakdown as to what the registration fee covers? Or what that's, or is it just all the same?
The registration fee for both childcare and preschool, those are the startup costs that are given to. So for instance, in registration, beginning here, this is, I got 80 students that have signed up for childcare. We take 80 times that 50, and that's his initial budget for childcare. It might be supplies, it might be on half-day, due to a special activity, it might be treats that they're bringing into the class, or the program. The same thing with preschool registration. So if we have six kids that start in three-year-old, we take six times 50, and that's their starting, starting. It does not mean that's the only spot. We adjust that based, that's the need of them. But those registration fees go directly to the program.
I have two questions. Okay. If somebody does childcare or preschool a consecutive year, do they pay the registration fee that second year? I know it says one time. Is that one time? Like three-year-old preschool, I paid it. Am I good enough for four-year-old preschool? Or do I pay it again for four-year-old preschool?
The latter. And it is kind of misleading way I have it there. It's every year, it's a one-time, every year fee you pay. So if I paid the three-year-old last year and now I'm going to four-year-old, they're going to pay that fee again for the four-year-old. For some of the four-year-olds, just to kind of clarify a little bit more, it holds their spots when we begin planning. But some of our four-year-olds also move into the GSRP once you look through that GSRP process that depending on when the budget is approved, sometimes we don't know how many seats till officially August. So we're holding them in tuition, then we move them to the, and if we move them, then that is reimbursed to them because there is no registration fee for GSRP.
I have a second question. How competitive is this to neighboring districts?
Um, I do not have, I can break, I can get that to you this week, and then you can have it before you make a decision. Districts are coming for voting at the next board meeting. I can ask this, is it possible?
Yeah, and just a couple of districts. I'm just curious how competitive we are.
Are these just our, are they Richmond or can these students be from anywhere, right?
These are all Richmond students.
Okay, so is there a schools of choice for, like, could we lose kids to another district?
Hey, you can bring this to anywhere.
Yeah. We could lose some kids from the childcare
Yeah.
To go to the one up in town there.
Okay. Could they go to Armadas?
You could, but they could also, you might try to become preschool, three and four-year-old, but then decide to do something else, whether it's St. Ays, St. Pete somewhere different, right? I mean, that's just
Generally
I guess what I think is, are we going to, if we raise it, are we going to lose kids?
Well, that's why I just wonder how
I guess that's what I was thinking.
I think from the tuition-based program, I can get you that information to at least be comparison. From a childcare, generally, if you are, generally childcare in public schools do not take children outside of their school. So for instance, our childcare goes up age 12. So some of our middle school kids, some walk, whether they can get on a bus, and the bus will drop them off in the front and then we'll take them into the childcare. We do have some kids that don't walk. But we do offer that as an option for our 4th grade families. And I will get you that information this week, and we can, if we have to make a decision in the next board.
Just an idea.
Yeah. I'm less worried about, yeah, like the childcare and more about the preschool, which is not curious.
The, the other thing that was done oftentimes earlier was I'll move back to this screen here. We could cap it at eight kids in a preschool, in this particular example, a three-year-old program. At eight kids, we know that we're covering our, or at 80, I should say. We're a cap because you're covering your costs, keeping it existing rates.
But you say cap it.
Which means it creates a waitlist.
Yeah.
And we, like I said, it would used to be like that, but for years, and if years are probably counting 10 years, we have not done a waitlist. We will figure out a whole new session, section to, to make sure all of those kids stay here. Generally, students that are in our preschool program stay with us and have great experience, at least from a school perspective and the staff. Especially those that are out of district helps retain those students. If they choose another preschool program, you know, they like it there, more likely they're going to stay until the next transition period of education. So I can definitely bring you the cost for other districts. Is there anything else?
Can I see, just, can I see the four-year-old program? So I'm just
We, we just, sorry to interrupt. We generally do get more for four-year-olds than we do three-year-olds. And a lot of our four-year-olds are in the GSRP. The only, the ones that are in the tuition, in general, they need five days a week in the GSRP program, Monday through Thursday. So the parents would have to find a fifth-day option. In the four-year-old program, we have some students that will be in the ECSE program in the morning and then move to a four-year-old preschool in the afternoon. In those cases, we generally make sure we have paid for the classroom because those students need, generally. Now, it's been generally more assistive.
So the per-student cost projection for the 18 students would be the 17, 42, 53?
Correct.
Okay. So then, but, okay, then we're only raising this one 200, 250 dollars?
Because we're close to that per-people cost. There is, I mean, you just look at those two numbers, there's really no need to raise. Because the dollars in a four-year-old supply are higher than a three-year-old. And so that additional cost would have lost up both additional, both additional costs.
Okay. But then, but then if you go back to the three-year-old one, the, the projected amount is the 11, 44, 67, and then obviously the new amount. That is, but we're raising that one actually more, yeah, more than the other one. So I guess I'm confused by that.
In the three-year-old program currently, we don't have as many V8s. You're more on the eight. And we get to a point where we start asking the question, can one adult, unless I hand it, if that's not the right word, but wrong play, is one adult to eight kids appropriate, sufficient? And sometimes it isn't. Because some of those students have other needs. They're, they're in that, maybe they might be in the beginning stage of getting tested for special education or something like that that causes them to have more support. So the cost here, I would say, for a three-year-old is more on the line of the eight. Because we have, currently, our three-year-olds do not have an eight, and they're only, if a shared eight, the numbers are more in the eight. So we're more on the eight to one ratio.
Okay. And then my last question is, the tuition doesn't have to be paid in full, or do they have payment plan options?
They do payment plans. We have, they have the option of paying in full, or they pay the, it's using automatic payment. It's paid around the first of the month, it's a hundred percent over, I think.
So do we offer incentive if they pay it in full?
We haven't. We haven't in the past.
Okay.
Most of our parents do do a payment plan because that's, plenty of other person situations, a lot of money asked for that.
Sure.
And this is just sort of board, kind of a timeline perspective. We have our preschool and kindergarten roundups coming up at the end of the month. So whatever, the recommendation would be before you. So if the board doesn't want to do this, then we would use our current rates. And we see how we go on from here. If you approve the recommendation, then we'd be able to communicate that to parents at those roundups. This is the last piece of the package that we put in.
So they would have time to prepare that.
Right, we don't have all-day four-year-olds, just four-year-olds.
We do not currently, because those all-days went to the GSRP classroom. Again, there's that Friday that's missing on the GSRP. So a parent needs that all-day. We have a potential losing those students. We don't have a four-year-old all-day option, presumably for five days.
Right, I just did a Google search on my computer. Armada is charging $1,600 for three-year-old. And Anchor Bay is at $11,800 for three-year-old. And then Armada didn't have their four-year-old up on the menu.
But that's current too. We don't know, they could be changing this.
But that's what I just
Much right.
For this year, for four-year-olds.
The biggest difference in cost is on the payroll for us. It's a settled contract.
Yeah, sure.
There are nine days of pay that they, you see that they didn't previously yet. Those are holidays. They also have the village burn snow days based on their attendance, which wasn't there previously, so.
So, but we're pretty much, I would say, equal or actually a little bit lower because their, their four-year-old was like almost $2,100.
But I'll take that information out of form, like with all the districts in the area.
I know.
But I appreciate that.
But then, also, I noticed when looking at their pages, I talked about the cap. They cap their programs at 16, so they don't go over that. So that is an incentive too, if we don't have a cap to be
So when you look at that 18 number, if that was 16, it's getting closer to what we're collecting. Again, what this cost doesn't include is generally, we charge new half, a piece of Mr. Gibson's tower because he had proof his property brought license there. That personnel doesn't include that. We try to start the teacher in the classroom first. Because regardless of a preschool program, the assumption that we're going to have a year at that building is not contingent on a preschool program.
But I would, I would totally, looking at that and seeing that cap, it totally makes sense not to have. That would be an incentive enough for me to know that I have a secure spot and I'm not like, I'm not going to be waitlisted. Book prices in general are competitive, if not slightly a little bit lower, so.
So generally, the process along that lines is if during the registration between now and June, we have, let's say, 15 three-year-olds, we would plan for two classrooms with just the teacher. And as more come, at some point, we would add that aid to that classroom. So we try not to turn anybody away and try to keep them on the low end.
That would just be incentive enough if I have peace of mind that I have a place to go and that
I'd have to worry about
Have to wait until like August 18th to decide.
Yeah, we've never turned people away because of, no, we've always added a section or found another person in that classroom.
And I apologize if I missed it. So if there's a family that has a three-year-old and a four-year-old, is there an incentive or reduce price if they have two children, one each program?
Currently, there is no. That's been a conversation that we've talked about. This doesn't, that's something the board, I'll have to make the floor. I can also put that with the rates to see what other ratio or cost. Some districts will give staff a discounted rate if they utilize our program. In general, we have not done that.
But honestly, by going off of this, we really can't afford to do that. We're kind of already at the bare minimum of what we can get. Do you know what I'm saying? So if we offered incentives, then we would be getting less, we could be barely being able to afford the program.
Well, because the three and four are different from what the projected student costs and all that kind of stuff. It's two completely different things, right?
Right, well, I get, yes, and I'm, don't get me wrong. I'm thinking, like I said, I mean, incentive even to pay it in full, as I said earlier, or you know, if you have two kids or whatever. Like, that sounds great, but I think that we can't really afford to do that. Again, we're barely breaking even as a
I think if you look at this, go one level up. Rather than look at this as a three and four, collectively, we're looking at what is our total cost of payroll and what are total costs of tuition.
Right.
And with the goal that that collectively between the two, at least break even.
Right.
There are going to be years that it may not. It may, our expenses may exceed. But the benefit you, as a district, we receive would be if they stay in our kindergarten, then they're more likely to stay through elementary. And then families oftentimes, well, if they're going to look at moving, we'll look at that transition. It'll be middle school, the elementary, middle school, or middle school to high school. So, yeah, we might fall a little below it, but we're gaining it along. And that's the uncertainty of this. And that's the uncertainty of this because it's all projections.
Right.
We could have a very low, you know. And what's not in here is if I have to lay people off, layoff costs. So that's, I'm not, I'm going into this not anticipating any layoffs. We're looking at, at least running what we did, so. But I can get the cost analysis of what others in the area and see if others do some type of discount rate when I give that to you. And then you'll have it before the board meeting, the next one, and then we can make your work up once in the afternoon.
Anyone have any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Well, Diane Blake, you're up next with the 2025-26 substitute rates.
At the last board meeting, there was a conversation and a recommendation to change the substitute rates for the 25-26 school year. There was some discussion about some different rates, et cetera. So going back and looking at, looking at what we currently do, how many term positions we had, this is what I'm recommending. These are all the other substitute rates, and I just put them on here because it's more a point of information. I don't believe there was a lot of discussion of changing these for the recommendation. It was more on the teacher stuff. But just from a perspective, from the historical perspective, there's been a couple of points in time that sub rates have changed. Prior to 2020, you know, existing food service, we were paying ten dollars an hour for a substitute rate. We currently pay fifteen, forty-five, or it's proposed next year is fifteen, forty-five. So when you look at that, we've increased in five years, again, fifty-four percent. Again, it's all relative to the actual dollar amount of the amount. But just to give you a perspective on it, at the last rate, we used to do, a teacher who worked one to thirty days got eighty dollars for those days. Once they hit the thirty first, they moved to ninety dollars. When they hit the sixty first, they moved to ninety-five. October twelfth, 2020, we increased those rates. And in the 21-20 school, two-school year, we went to a daily rate of one-twenty-five. And then we inserted, began introducing the COVID building subs. And then a long-term sub rate was, was one-fifty. In August of 23, we increased the daily rate, and that was a direct result of what others were paying around us and trying to attract them to come here. What was proposed on the twenty-seventh was a three percent raise. So when you look at it, moved to one-thirty-nine and one-fifty-four oh five. And so when you look at that one-fifty-four, from the eighty-five on the low end to the hundred-five on the high end, the percentage goes from forty-six to seventy-one percent increase over those five years. Again, costs have gone up. I'm not, I'm not even denying that, so. So what I have before you is to look at basically three rates, four rates if you look at an evening. Keeping the daily rate for a substitute coming to our district to move to one-thirty-nine oh five, the actual cost for us, you know, we pay eighteen point six percent on top of that for each staff. So the actual cost for us is one-sixty-four ninety-one. Keeping the building substitute at one-fifty-four and one-eighty-three. The proposal in yellow moves, it's an increase for the long-term sub. In this case, a long-term sub is usually something that's applied to someone who's assigned to a classroom for now fifteen consecutive days or more. If they're going in knowing they're going to be here for a long time, or at least fifteen days, they would make the one-fifty-nine rate. You'll see in the very last line I added was the evening requirements. So for that long-term sub is expected to participate in meet-the-teacher night or parent teacher conferences. On those days, they're working longer, so those rates of pay would be a longer rate of pay. Can you see how that was calculated? It was taking that one-fifty-nine divided by your seven-hour day, you get a per-day rate. They're usually about three hours parent-teacher conferences in those evenings. That daily rate plus one-fifty-nine gives you two-twenty, seven fourteen. So the recommendation for you is, is making the daily rate one-thirty-nine, which is what was on the twenty-seventh, take three percent rate over the previous, current daily substitute rate. Making the building sub rate of one-fifty-nine, one-fifty-four fifty, which is again a three percent rate. And making long terms, shortening the long-term sub time from thirty consecutive days down to fifteen, and then adding a rate to lower it. Part of the conversation in looking at this is how would we implement this in the system? There's basically would be four rates listed in substitutes. When they close out for the substitutes per day in, in Red Rover, they choose the rate of pay for that person. So if the sub was long-term, they would be choosing the one-fifty-nine rate for the substitute. Because the building's over daily rate, they're choosing the other two rates.
Business office is choosing.
It's kind of a checks and balances. When buildings validate that, yes, that sub worked, there's a drop-down menu on the rate they choose there. That kind of closes it out. And then we get the report from edge staff that validates these are all correct. So there's, there's a check. There is, oftentimes, we're correcting a number of reports we get from edge staff because the building's selected wrong for a variety of reasons.
So somebody-
Generally, generally, when there's a slot-
I'm assuming that I'm a sub that I'm making.
Oh, no, yeah, the sub is, the sub is not picking their rate. The sub is not picking their rate. That's up to the student.
I do that one every time.
What, Brian, the, the evening requirement rate that you put in there, how often does that happen, do you say?
I think as a younger staff, we have, I think that's going to happen when we have babies and they're not starting the school year with us, they're starting off. So we want that sub to be there, meet the teacher night at the beginning of the day. Pick on this in good, she did conferences. So in her case, she would, for those nights she did evening conference, she'd be paid more because it is, it is a longer day. Moving to the long-term rate of more per day, there's that conversation about the lesson planning. And again, depends on the person in that position. Some are very comfortable there. They might be a retired teacher, they might be someone who went through education, just is not interested in it full-time. Some rely on other teachers who can copy their lesson plans. If I'm in an elementary one class and they're at least teaching elementary one, I might take their lesson plans and implement them in the classroom. So I'm not doing them, but there are some that are writing or helping, practicing to the kids they have in front of them. And I just, I added, I didn't add on the previous one, just the importance of that cost of what our true cost is for that substitute. Because that's oftentimes, very few districts hire their subs in-house, and the ISD does hire them. So you're looking at instead of an eighteen percent increase, it's probably between forty and forty-ish percent we have on top of that if we were to hire them, if we were to hire
Are most districts still doing, they're still using edge staff on something?
It's primarily the retirement cost. I mean, it's a twenty percent savings using a third party.
It's not a few dollars.
Pardon?
It's not a few dollars, it's a lot.
Yeah, but you look at that, I mean, this is just one, and you multiply the number of subs out, and again, any given date, multiply it by the whole year. And these are, these are costs that are not just when people are out, but daily sub like when buildings are included curriculum, these are the costs we're paying per day to hold teachers out of this classroom.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say, I, I still have a problem with that long-term substitute thing as a former long-term substitute myself. My personal preference, I, I think it's too low still. I mean, we're only giving them five more dollars to deal with long-term classroom discipline, grading papers, the possibility of writing lesson plans or not writing lesson, depends on, like you said, depends on the teacher. I can write them, I can not write them. I feel like I'd be more comfortable with that being at least like twenty dollars more than a building substitute. I'm thinking like one-seventy, one-seventy-five. I don't, like, to me, that sounds so low.
Which number are you looking for, one-seventy-five?
Like the long-term substitute, the one-fifty-nine. Yeah, the one-fifty-nine.
The one fifty.
And I'm, I'm, the long-term substitute of one-fifty-nine. I think only being five dollars more than a building substitute doesn't seem fair to me. And I've done like six substitute over the years in those. It just, to me, I'd be like, I'll take the five-dollar pay cut to be a building substitute.
And I'm just thinking in that line of, when I'm looking at the evening requirement rate, when I ask, you know, how long does that happen? So we're gonna, we're gonna pay that much more for meet-the-teacher or parent-teacher conferences. And I agree with it, but I'm thinking the difference between the building substitutes there with us every day goes in the classroom as opposed to someone who is doing the long-term, like you said, I think I would want that person to do that.
The long-term.
So it's just a little bit more than five dollars.
When I first looked at this, I also thought that as well, but then, and they are getting a six percent increase where the other one, they're only getting a three percent increase. I don't know.
And we did lower it from thirty days to fifteen days.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, yeah.
Can somebody say no? If, if I'm a building substitute, then how do, how do I become a long-term substitute? Can I say, I decline, I just want to be a building substitute? Or do you just assign them and say, you are here and this is where you are, and you're a long-term sub now?
Generally, our current building subs have taken the long-term position generally. Given the scope, we also look for, is it the right place? For instance, we had one at the high school that the board will approve three building subs. We find someone to teach Spanish, one of those building subs, is probably not their strength. And so we've sought out a substitute who is certified in Spanish. And so we've locked that substitute in for the long-term. It's not every day, but it's the whole year, it's two days a week. And keep them to help not having to pay unfilled positions, we use them the other days of the week, base it as a daily sub.
I guess I'm just asking-
That particular person is making the one, currently the one-fifty.
So I guess I'm just asking because if it is only five dollars and it does require a lot less, and I can say no, and I know I'm going to get filled in the building sub, why would I take a long-term sub spot?
I wouldn't take a long-term sub for five dollars.
For five dollars, if I have the choice. And that's why I didn't know if they had a choice, if they could say, you know, you say to Miss Good, okay, you're going to be the long-term sub. And she's like, you know what, I'm good not being that, I'm just going to keep being the building sub.
I'm a little lassers by that.
Yeah.
Because if there's nobody else, that's why we have the building sub to fill the big.
Exactly, right. That was, that's the whole point.
Yeah, they, yeah, they said, if I was-
So they can't be saying-
I don't mean to pick on you because it's good, but if I said, I need to move from elementary to the high school to be a chemistry teacher, I don't know if that's even in her real house, but she might agree to it for a couple of days to buy at the time.
Yeah.
But from a long-term perspective, that's probably not a good thing to do, assuming you don't have a chemistry background.
Sure.
So it's a little more challenging at the, there are some secondary teachers that are built that we move down to elementary in a kindergarten classroom or that probably was a challenge for them. Because that's a whole different ball of wax.
It sounds like the long-term subs, it can be more of like a niche, right? Like, we want people in these long-term spots that are certified or have experience or are comfortable. So I think more than five dollars a day would be, because it sounds like finding somebody in Spanish or in chemistry or in these particular subjects can be a little more challenging. So maybe we should be incentivizing them a little bit more.
Well, but then I think, the whole point when we move the building subs back in, or kept them, I guess, I would think the thought would be, if the teacher at the elementary building is going to be out for a certain amount of time, that particular building substitute, all the kids know who they are and that, so when moving them into that one, it's a, it's a face they know, it's someone they trust, all of that. And to me, that's a, that's a huge deal as opposed to getting someone to come out that they can't do a good job. But I, I would just, I would just want to move it even fifteen dollars.
To what is yours?
So I just, yeah, just a little bit, a little bit.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I think, just my experience with my own kids being in school, teachers that are there all year, and I think long-term subs would fall into the same category, they do put their own money into the classroom, into the kids. So if we have a long-term, I would say it's maybe less likely for building sub to do it or a daily sub to do it, like, because you're not really, you're just there for the day, right? But if you're a long-term substitute, you're planning holiday parties and you're doing it, you might be more likely to put your own money back into the classroom. That's just what I've seen with my kids' teachers, they just seem to. So I would support, yeah, an increase.
So what are we looking at?
One-seventy-four fifty, twenty dollars more.
If we add twenty dollars more than the regular room, it'd be-
So that's one-seventy-nine, one-seventy-four fifty.
That would be another twenty, twenty-dollar difference a day.
And I feel like that's fair with lesson planning and classroom discipline and the odds and ends of putting, I know I did, you know, kids' birthdays come up and you-
You just do.
Yeah, you're, you know, you're going to make cookies or buy a cake or do something small one or whatever, yeah.
I would just be cautious to go down there because every group could probably make that argument, but they're choosing to, because they're on dollars. Teachers often do that, their classroom, they spend in their classroom.
They make that, but we've also worked really hard to, just so you don't pull that back.
Sure.
Not have.
Yeah.
You've done a really good job.
And I'm sure, I'm just saying, people are more likely to do it if they're in, if they're invested in the kids, they're in the classroom, they're watching the progress, it's a holiday party, it's a birthday, it's whatever, it's the end of the year. I think teachers just do it because they care, not because they have to.
Well, but isn't it also if we, if we did that amount? The reality is, we could be sitting here next year at this time looking that that doesn't really work, right?
Or we've never used it.
Yeah.
We might not have anybody in long-term.
We have any long-term subs coming up, do you know? Is anybody setting?
We currently have one, one of the middle school.
Right now?
One of the, are you still on long-term? Can't remember if they're coming up at the end of the month, end of the month.
Maybe the beginning of March, no, it's not.
But, and like we were talking about some of the other things, what are the other, what are the other districts who, where are they at with their pay scales?
Works ahead of them.
We thought-
And that we are, we are. And we used to not, when you started that eighty-five, ninety-five dollar, good lord, we were behind that when districts were paying a hundred, ten, hundred, twenty-five dollars a day for a sub. So we really, really, very competitive. But the, the building substitute and that, I think that's unique to us. Because not every-
District.
Not every district is doing that. It started with the COVID stuff and we decided to keep them in our district. I think that's unique to us.
There are, there are some districts that have building subs built into their collective bargaining agreement, and they pay them a different rate than the teacher, they give them, some, they get a whole different healthcare benefit cost.
Different packages.
Right. But for us, that was-
What do we say, one-seventy-four fifty?
Yes. That's kind of-
But that was my proposal.
How's it proposed?
Twenty dollars more. And again, this is next year, not right now.
And the reason why I'm projecting this is once we, when we start looking at the budget, if it's a, and again, I don't know if it's all combined, but let's assume it was a ten percent raise, I don't think it's going to be after my head, so. When we look at how we finished this year from a budgetary perspective, we'll pay on subs, we're going to have to increase that cost, assuming business as usual, we're going to increase that percentage. And so when you get to the bottom line of doing the budget, unless we get more money, we're squeezing the balloon and trying to find somewhere else.
I don't like that. And I think it, to me, for me, it works better in evening out, the evening requirement rate is just so much more than what they're doing every single day, that brings it a little bit closer.
Are you, just for clarifying, so the long-term sub of one-seventy-four fifty, are you looking at doing the evening long-term sub rate?
So I, I was surprised you did it. I kind of, I like that idea, but I, I guess I wasn't expecting that at all. I was expecting just a long-term sub. I didn't think of that other- I didn't think of that other option of having that evening, although, like you said, it ends up being, what, maybe five days or less out of.
That's what I was trying to say. In a whole school year.
Yeah.
Conferences, conferences.
Two nights, three nights, conferences and so forth. At that rate, if you paid if someone was there all year, or let's assume October one to March ten, that's four nights, three, three nights.
But I think it's a good incentive.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The one seventy-four fifty and the long-term rate evening, are you good with that rate?
Are you gonna readjust it to?
Or are you wanting to readjust it to represent additional hours?
I don't think so. I like it now.
Okay, so all we're doing, all we're proposing as a board is that we just change the long-term sub. The one seventy-four fifty.
Well, and we want the long-term evening rate too.
Adjusted from what?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yes.
So, this will come back to, uh, local group and choosings with the correct numbers and everything. And follow some, some of your, some of your strategy.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is our future millage fund consideration.
So, tonight, some of the items that I'm gonna share with you are, um, consistent with what the presentation was on in December. Uh, but this can give you a snapshot of, um, presentations that are coming forward for parents, including my, also our staff members involved. So, for the next three board meetings, the first one at each month, February tenth, March tenth, April fourteenth, I'll be summarizing kind of the proposals, looking at some enrollment numbers for specific, uh, birth buildings. Today's focus is on the middle school. And the reason why the middle school was chosen was because that's the one that we have the most need to add or create some additional classroom space. To give you the perspective, here's today's meeting. Next Tuesday, everybody is welcome, there's a letter that went out to the families tonight at seven o'clock. If you'd like to see, they have a copy. Um, we also mailed that letter to all of our township, um, and city council. Because if you called the last board meeting, the last one for bond, once the board made the approval, you know, they wrote to like everyone to kind of talk to them about it, answer any questions. This is giving them an opportunity to come and get information and so forth. Um, the tenor of all these presentations, we're considering it, the board has not taken action, and we gathered feedback from the, from the community. March tenth, we'll be here at the high school. Um, the eighteenth of February, we'll be at the middle school and the media center. March tenth, we'll be here at the high school for the board meeting, and then the community conversation on March eighteenth. April tenth, we'll be back here for the elementary presentation, with the seventeenth having a conversation with elementary parents. Again, anybody is welcome to come to all three, but each one of these has a kind of different take on it. I'll be summarizing what's going on at the other building, but I'll be focusing on that particular building to help with getting those families, uh, involved. And then at some point in May, I'll be asking the board to consider approving and going for a bond. We technically have until the end of June, although the sooner that decision is made, the sooner we can begin the process of the communication to our community and those that weren't able to attend. So, I took the current slides that you saw back in August and this, uh, December night, and I shortened them because I think it's important for families to understand the current enrollment. What this slide represents is there are two types of enrollments this school is looking at. We actually look at enrollment, being able to have a place for every student. That's the one on the left. The one on the right is how we get funded. It's our, what's called the full-time equivalent student, or FTE. And you can see some of the students in this one are shaded, or only half of them are there, which means they may only be here for half the day. They might be split between two programs in two different districts. They might be a specialized student as a reduced set of variety. So, given the same number of bodies, we could have two different numbers, eighteen students or fifteen point five FTEs when we look at this. So, this is important. The one on the right is how we get our funding. And that's the blended count between our February, uh, count, which is ten percent. So, tomorrow, this Wednesday, this is ten percent of our FTE will come towards next year's funding. And next October, ninety percent will come towards the funding. So, you need to think of enrollment like the stock market. You can't panic one year when you go up or down or up or down. It's looking at things over the long haul that you're looking for patterns. If over the long haul, your enrollment is on a decline, then yes, you need, as an organization, we need to, uh, contract and adjust to the needs of our, our districts. For some districts, that's closing buildings. We're unique, we don't have buildings closed, so. So, you need to look at it, um, if you have a financial analysis, just like, don't panic when the stock market go down, over the last three to five years, it's been up. So, think of enrollment as that. So, let's look at the pattern in our current enrollment. And I chose, time I've been here as my window, because I don't, I don't know the decisions that were made prior, but, um, in sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen were probably our lowest years. And you can see when you look at the dotted line, which is the progression line, a linear line, or what's the term?
Progression.
Progression, thank you, I was gonna say progression, I knew it wasn't that. Uh, it shows over time, we have increased our enrollment. And these are FTEs, these are body packs. So, we have fifteen, uh, these are all the fall counts. This isn't the blended count and all the, this is who was in our seat that we got reported to at the state on the fall. So, when you look at that number, fifteen fifty-nine point sixty, that's well over sixteen hundred bodies we have in our district. Because of the, they've done two types of enrollment. Districts take a third party and they look at the enrollment projection. And we use issue alliance for student opportunity. If the board does consider and actually approves it, we'll have to do another enrollment projection because it has to be within the last twelve months if you haven't done. So, we would contract with them, again, looking at our current numbers. This is just a summary, they give you multiple scenarios. Again, it's, it's a systematic, mathematical calculation that if this happens, you could have this number, if this happens, you could have this number. So, student opportunities does five enrollment projections, five different versions. One is moving kids up grade levels, one is looking at birth and death rates in the county or in the state, one is looking overall. But in all methods, method one, two, three, four, and when you look at method five, which is just an average of all four, all of them show we have an increase projected in our area, which is a good thing. So, when you have this projection, um, again, when you look at a ten-year increase over time, they all show over ten years, an increase. So, when you have this, much like a family, you have to think for the future. So, when you're expecting, you look at what you're going to need down the road. And that's exactly what we're doing here. We have a, a projection that we're going to need space down the road because we want those kids to stay in Richmond and have a great experience. Trying to look at a, so let's look at our current facility. Elementary school, we added ten classrooms, right? Currently, again, we could tighten up and we can, we can move and combine programs in the, in the rooms that aren't being utilized all day there. But we basically have three empty, and I say that with air quotes and very caution because those rooms are very valuable within those rooms right now. When you look at middle school, there is no space. There is not one classroom that's not being used at the middle school. In fact, the stage is actually being used part of the day for a classroom because our two music rooms are, are full. That's what's highlighted here. When you look at the gymnasium in our middle school, oftentimes, we split that. We drop the curtain and we have two gym classes there at one time. Is it doable and we're making it work? Absolutely. But it does limit some of the instruction that can happen because you don't have a full space. Yet alone, you have two classes, that you picture twenty-five, thirty kids in a class, and you've got two of them in an echoing gymnasium, it can be, it can be rough teaching. Okay, I understand. When you look at our high school facility, there are three rooms. And again, I say that loosely because one of the rooms is designated towards currently robotics, the other's currently used for our blessings, backpack blessings, which is thirty, forty families of kids we feed every weekend. So, that's very valuable. You can see in this one, the additions that were put on at the high school. The two thousand thirteen addition was four science classrooms, and the two thousand nineteen addition was a gymnasium and, uh, weight areas. So, we got to this point because our voters have approved us and been very positive toward this school and passed. I think it's more of a challenge than others, but they passed us in two thousand seven. They truly passed the bond, six point four million, two thousand thirteen, twelve points four, and in two thousand nineteen, it was thirty-eight point seven million. A lot of dollars, and think over time, costs will up, values of property will up, so you're gonna raise additional revenue. We have an opportunity on November fourth to go for a no increase. Which basically means, if you're willing to pay the rate you're paying now as a community member, we can generate some revenue to address the space and capacity. The conversation regarding this one is a little different than in bonds in the past. We've needed to fix things in the past. There are some things that we need slowly to fix because they're ending their life expectancy. This is, this is about space. We do not have space. If those enrollment projections hold true, we have a space to put students in. What it would look like is, in the purple bluish area is our current debt levy. What it's saying is in, right there, November of twenty-five, we could go to the vote and say, if you're willing to continue paying the levy, that looks levy, the green is the revenue that we would generate and would extend the debt out. Right? In July, July one of twenty-sixth, if we don't ask the voters, or if we weren't successful in the millage, you can see in the purple, there is a drop in the levy that we, we don't need the levy that much because of, we don't need that much to pay our debt, our current debt. And our current debt's expected to go through twenty thirty-eight. You can see prior, the last two tax collections in the summer, we dropped our levy. We went from the twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty-three levy of almost seven mils. We dropped it down to twenty-four, we dropped it down this past July, again. So, over time, we've already lowered our levy, or we need to levy twice. You can not exactly see it because the value of your house might have gone up, which might offset any savings we have. But if your value for house stayed consistent, you would have seen a decrease in your, the amount you're paying. PFM is our financial, they're the company we work with, that's all the, you know, the legal and the projection based on the property tax values and so forth. So, no increased levy, we generate about fifty-one point seven million dollars. On the last one, we asked the voters for the thirty-eight point seven, we asked them to increase it substantially over what they have. And we had a better guess vote than we did in thirteen. Any questions at this point? So, this is how we got it. We're looking at enrollment, we've been looking at how do we do without increasing the cost or the, the millage rate to our community. And now, we're at the point where we have an opportunity to generate fifty-one point five million dollars. So, again, planning to the future, what does this look like? These are some of the things that we've done already. We've done some, um, looked at the previous bonds, what didn't get done on the bond because it wasn't extended its life expectancy. There's a couple roof sections, um, that we, you know, that weren't in that nineteen bond near the end, but they're coming up in twenty-eight. Back in nineteen, that seems so far advanced, but it's really just around the corner through years. Um, there's doors from the ninety-six bond that are expired. The board did approve some of those, and those doors are on order, we could replace soon. Um, we looked at that with these building teams, we started costing out what additions would look like. And then our, our futures began to have meetings of stakeholders showing what were, talk, they came out and were talking about, asking for their input on what they would like to see in the bond, or the millage bond. If the board were to approve it and it was approved by the community, it would work. So, this is the focus on the middle school. This is, and again, I like your ideas and thoughts from the middle school, if you have any, but this is what we would be looking conceptually for in the middle school. Middle school's our largest investment in the bond in terms of addition. We're basically putting another wing on the middle school. In this picture, you can see there's a couple areas that are shaded, you can't really see them. Kind of see them, the light pink areas throughout the building, which I'll talk about in just a minute. But I'm gonna take it in quadrants or sections, and I put up in the left corner kind of where I'm talking about because you're very familiar with the middle school. This would be an addition, basically, we're looking at this being the four, five addition. Will be fourth, fifth grade to where they currently are, and almost creating a self-contained wing to them. On this addition, that large square would be a gymnasium, similar to a, a smaller gym like we did in the high school. This would also be very beneficial for the community groups after hours, if it creates another space for them. Um, you can see, again, I just want to clarify, there is no drawings, there's no conceptual, these are like on the top square footage about what it would cost. On that gymnasium, you'd have an entrance coming off the right, you'd have an entrance coming off the fourth and fifth grade, ability to secure the building, so if it was being used after hours, it could go into the building. The area at the top is the larger rectangle, that is kind of a multi-purpose room. We're looking at it to be the fourth, fifth grade music, multi-purpose room area. Remember, I made that comment, the current level of classes are on the stage. Um, this would allow us to have fourth, fifth grade specialist teachers in that wing. The others are classrooms, um, and where the exits, the fire exits, there's some offices, you'll see some smaller rooms for support staffs as the buildings grow. We're gonna need to bring more support staff, potentially more speech, more social workers, more resource room, PC, et cetera, based on the needs of our building. The area in red is some type of exterior concession. Um, the current concession building that's on hold would have to be removed, and I'll show you why in just a minute. So, putting that connected to the building, you'll see kind of the context and location. Um, it would allow then bathrooms and so forth to be attached to the building, only going to the, you're in the outside, you can only get in from the outside, you can't get into the building, um, et cetera. As we move up to the middle school, this is the current five hundred wing. We will be looking at doing some type of multi-dual double classroom. There is no space in the middle school. If you wanna take your kids outside of the classroom and do some type of science experiment or activity where the kids are spaced out, either in the media center or in hallways. Gym, the gym is used all day, um, so there's no, so this might be a place for gatherings or allow the administration to meet with teens, grade levels. It might be two classrooms coming together to do a project. It might be eventually a science where they spaced out doing a science experiment. But it allows us to have that flexibility from a structural and. Keep in mind all those little areas shaded in pink. This is in the current fourth and fifth grade wings. The current classrooms that you have here in pink have cubbies in them, so we would convert those classrooms. We could reuse those cubbies under the board and fifth grade wood. And we would convert those classrooms into a, primarily a six-three classroom, so there wouldn't be a need to have the cubbies in those classrooms. Again, at the end of this wing, conceptually, we're looking at some type of multi-purpose or rate. So, this could be the sixth and seventh grade wing. The other wing could have been the sixth grade, this could be the seventh grade, maybe to, to fly that way. Then you see here out of the building are restrooms. There is no design for restrooms, but we took the square footage of restrooms, knowing that our restrooms need a lot of work. These restrooms have not been updated since nineteen seventy-seven, this building opened, seventy-two in this building. I'm gonna read more there, they'll help me out, I remember the time when we built.
And then the fall of seventy-seven.
Fall of seventy-seven, I mean. So, you think about your own bathrooms, you have hundreds and thousands of kids going through your bathrooms every day. At some point, they need to be replaced. We've done cosmetic, we've replaced sinks, we've replaced toilets. Over time, we replaced some of the partitions, but this would be a complete overhaul of our, our restrooms. This is the middle school conflict, this map might look familiar to some of you. This was the map we used for the nineteen bond, and as we were planning the additions and the redesigns of the roads, et cetera. So, on the bottom map to the right, from the top left, again, it gets to the context of where we're looking at. But the bottom to the right, we. where we're looking at, but the bottom to the right would be where the additions would fall. So you can see on the right side, additional parking, we would basically be doubling, or perhaps tripling, because we've created two more rows of parking, which is parking closer to the softball diamonds that are there. Couple folds here, number one, as the building enrollment increases, this number of staff is going to increase, the number of activities that parents and people come to this year were going to be partly itself going. This allows us to then, again, we have to tear down that concession stand building that's there, but by putting that little red area generally at the outside, we'd be adding a concession to the, to the building that would allow for water, electricity, rather than a separate building. The area that you see kind of in that light yellow pinkish color on the left side, this would be what I would ask the board to consider, are your future opportunities? What I mean by that is there is a lot of space behind this addition that is unused. If you're looking from the back of the middle school, there's a baseball diamond that's kind of all grown in the grass.
It has a.
It has an unusable area right now. This would allow you to at some point put a road, possibly a small parking lot, and be able to in the future, if you put a early childhood center in the back there, it'll allow you still to have access to it. You could also extend on this addition even more, it still allows you to grow, if you ever needed to move your early childhood out of the elementary school. I don't see that in this board's tenure, maybe in the next ten years, I don't know. But it does allow without buying additional property, to allow to think, how do we access that area in the back? That is an easement by the city, so the city owner has an easy rights for these sewers, but put a road and all that there, then you're going to be able to have, you know, a part and so forth, and it does allow that as an option. The playground that's between the addition and the parking lot, my recommendation would be add a set dollar amount to the playground and be able to locate it, so it's either in that courtyard between the addition and the old building, or to expand in some fashion, but this doesn't show, but there would be a sidewalk that would run from the parking lot to the additions, people could access the addition, but these are just conceptual forms. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, this one, but conceptually, this is what we're looking at the high school, adding on to the science wing. Again, looking at bathrooms throughout the building, you can see some areas in pink by the current cafeteria, we'd be looking at expanding that cafeteria for enrollment purposes. We'll go back to the middle school for a quick second here. The area that we talked about, where the class is on the middle school, right here on a stage, that area, conceptually we'd be looking at taking that area out and expanding the middle school cafeteria. Again, these are all concepts, there aren't any drawings or anything finite, but from a budgetary perspective, the numbers that we've estimated in all of these are over the fifty one million, so with the board draft, you list, and based on what other people are saying, we're going to have to prioritize, this is what we would want to make sure happens. My recommendation would be, let's get the additions on, so we can anticipate the space. As with any addition, it takes a couple years, so if this were to pass in November, you're probably not looking at breaking ground until the fall of twenty six. It may be an opening in January of twenty eight for this. Again, we think about the elementary, we did the additions on the elementary school, we started in the fall, and it was almost a full year, a little over a full year since we started breaking ground, so that actually, could actually utilize them. And if you recall that year, we were under the eleventh hour, we had to move school back a week, started a week after Labor Day, because we were still unpacking trailers. We don't have that in this particular case. High school elementary, and basically it's a lot smaller project, there would be some additions where the current kindergarten playground is at, and we could either go that way or we could go down into that, and the other major expenses on this, my recommendation, expand the cafeteria, kitchen, excuse me, the kitchen, basically it's definitely the size. That kitchen is not designed to serve six hundred meals, not even, with every student receiving free breakfast and lunch, the capacity is running. So I'm going to pause here and get info on your questions on the middle school. I'm going to come back with more detail on the high school. Questions on the middle school, or thoughts on the middle school, from your perspective?
I, I agree with you, Brian. So I'm glad that you talked about the lunchroom, because that was one of my biggest thoughts, was to either expand or possibly even add a secondary smaller lunchroom for the fourth and fifth graders. Because even as I'm looking at this, the elementary school lunchroom cafeteria, at least the area in which the children sit, is larger than this one.
The elementary is tight because we're running four more official lunches there.
Right. And I know for the middle school, they're already starting lunches at ten thirty, which is pretty early. So, and also the time that it would take for the children, the teachers, running kids down, I mean, especially if they're down in this firing, they don't have that much, you know, in the line, I just, have you thought about a secondary, maybe not a full-on kitchen, but something, a serving kitchen?
This particular thought that has not come in any of the discussions with the team and the architects, that is not as hard as a second kitchen, call it a cold, because it depends on what that most.
Right.
Adding a kitchen is a, adding a kitchen or doubling is a, is a very costly, it eats up a lot of the budget very quickly, because of all the regulations and so forth that you have to have.
Right, but then in addition.
So that kind of the middle ground was this space where the cafeteria is at, and basically we'd be giving up a state, and the thought is you're in which many districts are size, utilize their formal auditoriums more for those middle school classes, which we've been doing due to the last, we're, for our board's term, we try to maximize the use of that auditorium. It would basically increase that cafeteria almost a third, so thirty, almost a thirty-three percent increase, right now, and at that stage, expanding the cafeteria. Similar concept is what we're looking at at the high school, almost expanding the cafeteria, because we could run three lunches at the high school, but it, it does create instructional issues for that more power teacher, when them lunches right in the middle, they're basically twenty-five minutes in the front and twenty-five minutes in the back, and so you try to put classes that hour to have that B lunch, that no one, that don't have a lot of proper setup, or they'd be a long period. It's not out of the question, if that's in the conversation, look at a satellite gym or satellite kitchen, that could be if once this comes to fruition and enrollment, you've got the space added on the end of that addition, that you could at that point add a satellite kitchen for, for a smaller meal service. And if the floor is the right floor in the gymnasium, many gyms have gym and cafeteria in the same room, you could easily put tables in there and so. And what, what I think this does is it gives you options for the future. Right now, our kitchen capacity at the middle school is really under capacity for what it's designed for. So this would not put our kitchen capacity to cooking out of the run. If all these, if you had thirty kids in every classroom, plus the maximum by contract, a lot of kids would be at the service, you'd be looking at multiple lunches. At that point, you're forced to start that early lunch period. But that is, that is looking at that space when we encounter kids in the lunchroom, being able to seat them.
I guess along with what Candice was saying, with the, with the capacity is for the kitchen, the meal output is now, versus the projection of students that were hoping to increase with this bond proposal and all the additions, is it, I guess, in track in regards to kitchen? Could be, is it, the projected number of students coming in going to be able to still be within that, that kitchen, or, you know, here's.
With, with the additional space, it's in the capacity, here's why, and I'm going to walk over here and point you. If this is your cafeteria right now, you've got two serving lines, one on this side, one on this side, but what it does show is you have the capacity to put in two more serving lines out here, it would mean more staff, but you could do out cart items out there and have two lines serving the main meal. Again, that's more staff. The back end of the cafeteria, the capacity based on this square footage would be enough, we might have to add a stove, I don't know if there's space in there, but there's, it's a large kitchen. That kitchen, hey there, when I first started, it's satellite food, ship the food to the other building.
Right, so, if I may, so if, if we're, we're looking at having this new section be potentially or primarily the fourth and fifth graders, you said, you know, almost, almost isolate, potentially.
The school, the, the school.
Right, right. And, and so if we, we have the capability for the kitchen to cart down the food to this area, so they don't have to walk down the halls and wait in the lines, like, you know, was mentioned earlier, does the kitchen have the ability to bring that food over here and maybe serve it over here?
There would be additional staff. You'd have to have additional staff, because you'd have to have additional staff, you'd have to put a serving line in there.
Right.
And you'd have the people designated to that, which are not designated, which, again, if you have the increase, excuse me, number of kids, we're going to have increased food service staff.
But I think, but I think the answer to his question is yes, by the following, because we're talking about this area, you're talking fourth and fifth grade wing, and you could talk about things you want to do with that, so yes, the answer is food can be carted down, so that those fourth and fifth grade kids are staying with them, they're winging. And your answer is that.
With the thought that the space, and I'm going to use a multi-purpose area, the gymnasium, we think that as we're planning the materials in that room.
Or the floor.
That it's easily cleanable, so if this becomes an area where we might need to purchase some equipment to clean the floors between gym chairs, et cetera, so it has the ability. It also has the ability with this layout that you could expand and put a second kitchen, again, to serve two parts of the building. At some point, the district's going to have to make the decision of physically, in this G bracket space here, you can only keep adding so much before you start booking. And I just want to put in perspective, the square miles of our district is the exact same square miles of Utica Community Schools. Utica Community Schools has thirty thousand, you'll have less than thirty thousand kids, probably not in my lifetime, but if this was ever developed like a Utica, we would need secondary sites, and that's where this board or future board seems to look at. If the intent of this bond is let's maximize our capacity here, we can do it. And I think that's a plus for us, is having everything on one campus is unique. I don't think there's any district in McCombe County that's even close to what we have in terms of maybe the schools of the last.
But the idea though, right here talking, when you, when you, when you're saying that fourth and fifth grade wing, that it's, this is, this is the beginning stages, but the vision, if you're looking at that to be a fourth and fifth grade wing, then the vision would be, how do we figure out that they're able to eat there, and that will come as we start talking more definitive stuff about what we're going to do. I think that's the question.
And yes, and this is, this is something that if that's kind of long-term, to answer your question, and your question, kind of what you're summarizing. Even if you built an addition, and we used it right now just for storage, with the idea that that addition is for a future kitchen, it doesn't have the bells and whistles, it doesn't have the equipment, but that positions the district to be able to have that addition, ready to go, and it's a lot quicker to buy the equipment and put it in to get that kitchen up and running than to build it and put it.
And has there been any thought, I see that all of these wings and the additions are going out, any thought to going up?
We've got that thought. Building up is hard.
Well, remember we did the high school, we couldn't because it was not structurally sound enough. Because we talked about.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of where I'm going, as we go out, you know, as we're projecting higher, you know, student numbers, you know, we're going to run out of space, and like you said, then we got to plan.
Well, if, when we build these additional wings and structures, if we build it in such a manner that may, the next step could go up from there instead of out, maybe that would be something considered.
Those pieces could go up.
Right.
Even if everything else doesn't really work with it, you could at least make the new part, you know, something like that.
That, that's an option.
Yeah, of course, that will increase your, your cost, your construction cost, but if, you know, long-term, is that something that may be of interest, you know, for the, the district and the board here to consider?
Absolutely, those are costs, the biggest one is, we've got to put an elevator in, you know, and the cost of maintaining an elevator, and, you know, that, but it's not, there are districts that are two stories.
I think he's just saying now, just making sure that.
The foundation is structural.
Yeah, so that gives us an option in the future.
But, okay, but the thought, okay, Brian mentioned, we do have to have an elevator, so when you, when you do that, you have to make sure that it will have a pit, it has to have all your prep work for eventually an elevator.
Right, so that's, I'm just throwing the idea out there.
It's actually sound accommodating for a future addition.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, again, going back to the fourth and fifth grade wing, for right now, the conversation of doing the add-on thing that you talked about for.
The kitchen.
For the future cafeteria.
Future kitchen.
I think that, that would be something to think about, right? That we could have.
Yeah, for sure.
For right now, the educators, they, the teachers, they take them physically down, what they're doing.
Right.
Kind of like an elementary.
So that's more, they're in lunch hour also, right? They, they take the students and then they come back and have their own personal lunch. So that's taking away.
It's not that paddable. It's good. It's good to get them walking.
You're taking, from a, from a, from a founding standpoint, we count thirty-five minutes and we cannot count for instructional, you can only count one train, one passing time to lunch, right? So the time that they're coming back from at five minutes, we can't count for instructional. So there's a thirty-five minute window based on current contract that you can't, if not instructional. So if a teacher is in a very far end corner, and they normally leave two minutes before lunch to walk the pit, they might now need to be leaving three or four minutes before lunch to give them all count. Because it is, it, just look, it's a longer walk, so you just, but, but the intent is once they drop their students off, they have a thirty-five minute, or it should be a thirty-minute lunch by contract. Any questions or comments on the, the middle school? So I hit some, kind of looking at expanding the lunch, possibly doing the addition for a future lunchroom in the fourth and fifth grade, and maybe use it as, like I said, a storage area in the meantime, looking at the foundation to make sure futures needing to go up, the, the infrastructure's there.
I think that lunchroom kitchen space.
Kitchen, kitchen.
Where we could use, well, like you said, whatever we use on that floor in the gym, gym quote cafeteria.
And Brian, you did say that in that gym on the fourth and fifth grade wing, organizations could use that, so I'm thinking.
That would be the intent.
Hometown or something, they could use that. I know cheer space has always been an issue, but that would be a perfect little size for maybe hometown or something to use also.
Absolutely. The intent of all of ours is to, when they're not being used, to maximize the, the use on the elementary. You know, with all of this, we will have increased personnel costs. If you're adding a whole wing, I'm going to have to add custodians. A couple of years ago, we had the five hundred wing shut down in the middle schools, we combined, so we didn't have to clean it every day. We, we use every room now, so. And as I said, in the, here's a general, we're looking at high school, that will come next meeting, I'll note it, it'll come in two meetings. Where we're at is, with the board presentation, you guys asked me to pass a resolution, pass Where we're at is, with the board presentation, you guys asked me to pass a resolution, asked me to start gathering information. In the January communicator, there was a lot of information that was sent out to multiple households throughout the district. There's a letter that goes home, it looks like this, went home today, it was dated the sixth, we need that out today. We're doing the presentation of the middle school on the tenth. We've got the community presentation on the eighteenth. In March, we'll focus on the high school, in April, we'll focus on the elementary school. With coming back to the board with, here's kind of where we're at, here's the impact or the feedback we received with staff and community members. I want to just close with, you know, when I started here eleven years ago, having a thought about adding buildings and adding additions was not in our conversation. Great things are happening in this district, we have our bumps in the road every day. But when you look at enrollment numbers, and they continue to go up, if we're choosing us, they're moving out to this area. We've got the Swan Creek development, we need it on the north side of town. We've got the West Richmond that's nearing completion over here, and there's a lot of land in this area that could be developed in future policies. I'll leave you with this, and I'm not looking for any answers, but the board think about, as part of a bond, you could put into that bond an allocation to begin looking for land. So it would be something that's not for current, but is acquiring land for the future and having it. Many districts, when you look at what they own, if you do a title search, have a lot of land, and again, looking at future growth. This particular one, if I just quickly showed you those snapshots of the three, we'd even have that fifty-one million like that. Cost of addition, then when you look at the national level news, tariffs and all that stuff, with steel and all that, we got in at a very good rate at nineteen five. Those that are building now are paying a lot more than what we paid at nineteen, so. Those are things we have to keep in consideration, and we can't manage, we have to, we have to commit to the voters if they approve it. And we've done what we said we were gonna do.
If we were to consider land at some point, what would we base that on? Where the majority of our students live currently?
Typically, what you look at it is if there's a dollar value for land, you look at what the going rate, a school, adding a school, an elementary school, adding high school, maybe you wanna look at putting all the athletics complexes in one area. There's down the road, which would mean there are athletics here, we go all the way to the law for building. And what, what's your purpose for land? If it's a building, the industry can give you a general statement, if you wanna build an elementary school, you need so many acres of land. And generally, in this time period, an acre costs X dollar, so you need to put X number of dollars. But in the bond application and what the voters have to approve, the language has to be written that we're looking to buy land. From a procedural, you usually hire a third party that does negotiating, you're invited to go to Mr. Sirens, hey, the school wants to buy land. You buy great prices. So, but that, you'd have to put it into the bond language, voters would have to prove, yes. I don't know in this day if people are ready to have that conversation as a community. Because we pride ourselves in everything going on here on one campus, and we're basically telling them we're ready to split. And again, I don't know, I could be off, but I don't know if it would be at this point.
Also, I'm sorry. If we did, if we did do that, don't we have to spend the bond money within a certain amount of time to let me have that purchase land? Yeah, within like, whatever.
Well, you have to purchase land within the framework of the bond. Or make a decision that, okay, we're not gonna purchase land and reallocate the money with what the voters approve. But then, the, the risk is you're telling the voters, you said you were gonna do this, but you didn't do it.
Right.
And again, that's the risk with, I mean, we could say, this is what we're doing, and prices jump twenty-five percent, we gotta reduce the quantity of building, that's with any construction. I think people understand that, but if they're going in the mindset we're buying property, then I mean, next time you ask them and you don't do it, it might be harder stuff.
Yeah, and not only that, but then, like I said, you also have, you have to purchase land by a certain point, so like, you couldn't be, you know what I mean? Like, you couldn't say, oh, we're still gonna keep this for land, ten years from now, have this set aside for land, like, we don't have that much time.
Oh, no, no, you have to spend, you have to spend a certain percentage of the bond within so many years, and all the bond within, there's another.
And I just wouldn't have to start building right away.
Correct, right, right. And I just think, from being part of a board that did buy land and it did not go well, I, I think our better focus is to go with, these are the needs, this is what we have to do. We are, we have buildings that are full, that, that's in this community, that's a sell. Do, why are you asking me to purchase land, you know what I mean, when we're, we're trying to, to do this? That's my thought.
No, right, I agree.
That's the way to do it.
You could do much like we do as, um, half of yours, turn, put a little money aside, that you have the ability on a general fund to purchase land in the future. That's an option, but when you do that, you're taking away from other expenses that are gonna occur in, in organization, counter costs, et cetera. But I think for the short-term, based on the enrollment production, we need space. And when you look at just up there, that's fifty-one million dollars right there.
Yeah, and I mean, I also do think that people in this, I agree with people in this district would, I get the sense anyways, that they would be more open to us putting the money in the infrastructure on a new build so that they can build, we can build up. Versus build.
That's correct.
The only thing to consider about building up, though, is that you still have to, I mean, additions are great, but parking, drop-off, pickup, horrible, right? I mean, all the renovations we did with the last bond were really great, and we did expand the parking lots, but it's
Never enough.
Still a nightmare.
It really is.
It really isn't, so if we build up, that's great, you're still gonna have to build out with more parking space and stuff.
Yeah.
You just have to.
Parking garage.
Right. A school district with a parking garage.
Yeah.
Come on, hey.
Something else to consider.
All right, so you are welcome to join me next Tuesday, we'll be at the middle school media center. It's door fifty-five, which is the old main entrance, that's what's in the letter to come through that way, and so we'll be welcoming parents there. We'll get the word out, and I'll spread it. We'll do a couple of Facebook posts, if you love, and have the conversation, the board, the mayor, help them understand, so that we can begin this process, and we'll thank the parents, maybe a career decision or an education decision. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil raves. Sandy, do you have anything?
Maybe not, I have anything to say.
Raymond.
Uh, yes. So April Mills and Grace Strombly are the CTE students. Then recently identified a need for something, they provided a force of action and then presented that force of action, and then put it into, to action once they've got the approval. And with the end resolving, that a lot of students now benefit from their, from their initiative. And then, and I'm gonna leave the, the cliffhanger out there and Kevin set up to check the Richmond Community Schools Facebook posts to find out more exactly what that initiative was, what the benefits were. But, but kudos to them for, for identifying something and then putting things into action.
Thank you. I know what it is. Margaret?
Do you have two things? Kudos, I went to Yale on February first to powerlifting, was able to watch the girls, they came in second. And again, like I went last year, it is amazing to watch these girls. Girls that can't weigh more than about a hundred and thirty pounds, lifted two hundred and forty pounds, it's just really cool. So kudos to them, and I do promise to stay long enough to watch the boys, but I haven't so far. And then on Friday, along with Deb, I was able to attend the CTE awards breakfast in Cameron Moore and Jared Haynes. Were honored as our two CTE students, so it was fun to be there with their families and see them get their award, but I wanted to give a shout out to our, is it called business partner?
Yes.
There's a business partner, our business partner, Jordan Huffman from Tribunal Media House of St. Clair. He has a relationship with Jason Robbins, who is our TV production teacher. And he has helped our students, helped in the classroom, gave us over two thousand dollars worth of camera and video equipment, and is big in the digital media productions, what this Jordan Huffman does. And these cameras are enabling our kids to see different ways to do TV production stuff. They're coming back, Jason said to talk to our students and that, but just kudos and thank you to him for being our business partner.
I'm just gonna add a piece to it, one of the pieces they're doing is the drones for coverage, like they can do over the football game or something like that, so they're gonna start having visuals from a drone image. And he talked about to be able to fly one, you have to get a license through the FAA and how they're going about trying to do that with the students, so it was really cool.
That's very cool.
It was very, very cool. That was just a sidebar on my part. Sarah, do you have anything?
I do, I do. I just want to say thank you to everybody who contributed to the baskets that we got at the last meeting. Those were very thoughtful, so to everyone out there who kind of put things in those baskets, that was just really thoughtful, and everything in there was really adorable. And then I was able to attend the last BWAC for the varsity competitive cheer, and we were the BWAC champs. So that was very exciting, our competitive cheer team is doing great this year, and we have districts on Saturday, so I'll be attending that, and very excited for that.
Thank you. Danielle?
I'm good.
Candace?
Yes, so I was able to attend the Richmond Trap Team fundraiser meet and go event on Saturday. It was Ryan. And I just wanted to do a shout out to Coach Alex, Coach Chris, Drew, and Coach Chris Palumbo, who made the dinner that night, he was our chef. And the Trap Team boosters, they put on just a huge fun event. And that whole team of booster ladies all got along well, and they just really created a fun event, and thank you to them for coming out.
Okay, so I just wanted to say the same thing that Margaret, I think of the CTE awards, and it was a, a very nice event. I want to add that we will be honoring our students, we had, we were gonna do it tonight, but we had a schedule conflict with them. So we will be honoring our CTE students, because February is CTE month. So it's a great event, it really, really was.
Okay, next item on our agenda is Joe, our student report, please.
All righty, let's start with the high school. Last week, we celebrated snow coming week with the pep assembly, spirit week, and dance, where we had over two hundred and thirty students attend. It was really successful, it was very awesome. Rumor has it, we're trying to work some more interesting aspects in regards to the music, whether that be live music, you know, publicly advised playlists where people can make in submissions, but that really hasn't been set into effect yet, but, you know, something that we definitely like, we're definitely looking forward to. As mentioned earlier, and hinted to in our last meeting, Cameron Moore, Jared Haynes were honored at the MCTAA breakfast recently for their success in our career and technical education courses. The culinary arts program went on a field trip recently to the Culinary Institute of Michigan, I heard a lot about that. It was at Baker College, and they checked out their program, they learned a lot about post-secondary opportunities, and enjoyed some really delicious lunch prepared by the on-campus students. Mrs. Willock's class did an in-the-building field trip to the food service department here at the high school this week, where they learned about the inventory process and were able to assist with the counting of leftover items and like the drawer, at the end of the day, kind of closing things up and whatnot, which they said was something that they definitely looked forward to and enjoyed, as they got to work a lot with their peers, and they overall had a great time. Scheduling has started for class of twenty-six and below. We will have our carousel of courses take place on February thirteenth. And we will be inviting the eighth graders as usual over to the board, or to the board, to the school for their in-building orientation and a nice experience at lunch, where they can hang out with some high school students that will be there, kind of touring them. It's something we do every year, always great to keep it going. Moving on to the middle school, Friday, February fourteenth, will be a virtual district-provided professional development day that us students are excited for. The instructional staff will be learning engaged, um, learning techniques that they can then continuously apply to us students. Friday, February twenty-first, is our annual RMS dodgeball tournament, which begins at four-thirty. We welcome anyone who is willing to come and watch the very fun event, I remember participating in it when I was younger, always great. They always do a great job running that event, and we're super excited. The RMS band is preparing for festival, which will be held on February twenty-seventh at Stevenson High School. It's a very great honor to be able to do something like that as a band student as well. It, it's a tough thing to be able to go around and portray that level of skill, especially on an instrumentalist basis, and Miss Scheck does a great job doing that, as well as the students a part of it. We'd like to congratulate them and wish them good luck on their journey. Our builders club, run by Mrs. McCannan and Mrs. Zimmer, are making blankets for our children's hospitals this week, which is absolutely wonderful to hear about, super excited, we'll keep you posted. NJHS and Student Council are teaming up together to collect donations for the Macomb County Animal Shelter throughout the last week of February, which is another wonderful donation opportunity that our school, our middle school, has been able to provide, and it's just wonderful to hear such great things coming out to help contribute to not only our community, but multiple different organizations as a whole. Moving on to the elementary school, preschool is getting ready to dance the night away with their winter formal, which will take place on Wednesday, February nineteenth, from three-thirty to five-thirty. Students will read a book, enjoy some treats, face banding music, and all a bunch of other fun activities. February is kindness month at Lee Elementary School, and where students are awarded kindness awards throughout the month. And will find joy through daily activities within the themed kindness calendar. Lee Elementary School is also getting ready to kick off March's reading month, whoop, whoop, gotta love reading. All, all board members are invited to read in the classroom if you so wish. A special shout out to Mrs. Manguti, where she was showcased on WJR radio station and School Talks podcast discussing the importance of literacy on the topic of reading and whatnot. Super cool, we, on behalf of the students, wanted to congratulate her for such an interesting opportunity, sounded like a lot of fun. After-school activities, our middle school boy is live. Our middle school boys' basketball program is so far off to a great start, they're having a great time, learning as they should, and will hopefully be ready for further sport encounters as the season continues. Congratulations to the six wrestlers who qualified for this Saturday's individual wrestling regional tournament, those athletes being Jack Akins, Jacob Fink, Aiden Bergeron, Zach Pinkering, Alan Fletcher, and Colin Loom. Pauline Chapman, who also qualified for the girls' state finals by winning her regional best game, which is pretty awesome. This Thursday, we'll be recognizing the members of the snow coming court at the halftime of the boys' varsity basketball game against St. Louis City. On Friday, we will recognize our senior boys' basketball players as a whole before their final home game. And senior bowlers and powerlifting student athletes will be recognized at halftime on Friday's game as well. On Wednesday, RHS will host the second middle school cheer BWAC jamboree, as mentioned previously. The Blue Devils took first place, congratulations to them, at the first BWAC meet of the year, and look to do the same. On Saturday, we will be hosting the varsity girls' competitive cheer district that will kick off at two o'clock.
This Saturday?
This Saturday. Sign-up sheets for spring sports will be available later this week here in the media center at the high school, and there will be a spring sport parent meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at six o'clock in the RHS auditorium. Lastly, congratulations to all that were casted and are now part of this year's Richmond High School musical, Legally Blonde. The cast list is posted up on their social media platforms and as well on posters here in the high school. in the high school. Otherwise, that's it for the students. So far, so good. Great place to learn, great place to be. We just like to thank all the staff and our fellow students for allowing us to experience what we do.
And Joe, what part did you get in the play?
I got Warner, the evil boyfriend.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. I, I, I don't know as much as it, as some of our other cast members. I've watched this musical probably two times this past week, but still need to indulge myself more in the, in the culture of it. It's a lot more, it's a lot different than the movie, and therefore, for movie watchers who haven't seen the musical, it's still a very enticing experience due to the, the multitudes differences.
Anybody have any questions for Joe? Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is our superintendent legislative update, Mr. Holmes.
Just follow up with Joe. Joe said that you have time on the nineteenth for the winter preschool winter formal. It is something to see. So again, if you have an opportunity to go stop by at three to five, they're dressed up to the tee and dancing in the cafeteria, so. Before you is a flyer that is mailed today to every household in the district in their zip code. This is, on the front, is a kindergarten roundup, which is on February twenty-sixth. This is the class of twenty-three-eight, which, when you look at that enrollment projection, that's the class we're talking about. This is what we're talking about. On the back references the preschool roundup, which is on Thursday, February twenty-seven. This is the class of twenty-three-nine and twenty-four.
That makes a difference.
It's not real joy, so, hey, it all thought two thousand, except we're going to get it right. A lot of the stuff that was mentioned by Joe, so I won't reiterate it. We have coming up this Friday, I just want to remind parents that there is no school due to the professional development day. And then Monday is our winter break, which is also President's Day, so there will be no school Friday or Monday for students. REA members are here Friday, and then everybody's off, majority of everybody's off on Monday the seventeenth. As far as legislating, there's not a whole lot happening. The governor did introduce her budget. I encourage everybody to take a minute and read it. The governor's budget has basically a four percent increase in line items, and it moves everybody in the state, both public and charter schools, to be a ten thousand dollar per people allocation. So for Richmond, that's a three hundred and ninety, if it's three ninety-two or three eighty-two increase for us. It's a little less for charters because they got the increase this year. We are watching some of the shuffling in the retirement, because if we read it correctly, there's a net increase of one percent for us in retirement obligations that we didn't make this year. So this starts the budget process. We'll wait for the House and Senate to release their budgets, and then the negotiation between the two. It will be interesting.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our items of interest from the board. Okay, Danielle?
I'm good.
Sarah?
All set.
Candace?
I'm, I'm ready, I'm good.
Okay. Raymond?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Margaret?
Can we, when we're going to be talking about budget in the next, can we talk about the building sub, bringing them back in as employees? I, I know it's probably real far-fetched, but just what
Maybe give us some number figures, the cost.
Yeah, yeah, what that, what that looks like when we start talking about the budget. Or at least, yeah, because you've got to add the health insurance.
Yeah.
Are you talking in the budget amendment, or will you start the FY twenty-six?
Or next year, yes, next year.
I think it's Margaret. Nope. I'll save you. Uh, no, no, I think that
Hey, I just have a reminder to all, and you'll be, as we get a little closer, on our calendar, we have March third is a, our meeting with Brian regarding his goals, so we're going to take a look at him and change or whatever. We're going to also add our workshop piece there and finish up the evening. We started some of our things that we didn't finish there, our last workshop, and we're going to do our board evaluation. I will be sending out the, our board evaluation template for you to fill out and complete and send back to me. So it'll be coming in the email here within a couple, a week here, so I just want to give you time and let you know that that is coming your way.
What time would that be? Is that at three thirty?
It's six thirty. Six thirty when we're going. Yes, six thirty.
Any questions on that? Okay, next item on our agenda is our public comments. Since the last board meeting, I have not received any emails, and there were no comments that we needed to address. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
Apologize, I did get one email from Coach Pesna, which I directed to Brian, and it was just, it was on enrollment.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our action item. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the presence services agreement.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with presence to fill a temporary vacancy in special education as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Sarah?
Sarah, we'll give it to Sarah. Okay, any discussions?
I just wanted to remind the board at the back, this is for a speech in language specific. We're not using any other services with presence, it's for a specific situation.
My two cents. Although I don't agree with doing this virtually, I'm going to vote yes because I know we need to stay in compliance, but if I could oppose it, I would, but I know we need to stay in compliance, but I'm strongly against this, and I had conversations with Mr. Yel and things the last couple of days as well. I'm good, but I wish I could vote no.
It is not the best.
It's not.
Absolutely.
I think we can all kind of agree it's not the best, but
We really did explore, we tried every option we could.
We agree.
Yeah, it's, it's just like beating COVID and this, I mean, I don't know, I believe that our speech passed, they go across K-12.
They do, we have two in the district, and so what we did, just so you know, the ones that are the most medias, we're putting in front of a person. The ones that are the least, that's a way of saying that risk, we're, we're putting them in the virtual. Severity, yeah, that's probably better. So it is, it is not my choice to try finding someone for very long, but if you're going into this education, you're going to special ed, go for a speech path.
Well, and that was my conversation with Mr. Yel, it's just, it's frustrating that, I mean, I know in the last three years, since COVID, but specifically the last three years, many of the students have had five different speech pathologists in three school years, between in-person and then virtual, and then an in-person and a virtual, and then they're going back. So like Jackson alone has had five in the last three years. And so I know he's not alone in that, and that's super frustrating. I don't know the solution, but we need to raise terms or something, because that, that creates that bigger gap in severity, you know, so. And that's why I don't agree with it, but I have to, because I know we need to stay compliant.
How many students do we have that
Are receiving services?
Are our service board?
We have eighty total students that receive services, and if, we definitely have much more than half with the, are in person, with Mr. Spence who's still here. I think we're at about around thirty, thirty that will be in the virtual. And so it was off.
So with that virtual, as you know, there's a reassignment of another staff member to be in that room with kids, get the technology on, make sure they're obviously supervised while they're getting the virtual structured, so they're not alone, but
Right. Is it tailored to that student or is it
That, that virtual teacher would, would have the idea of what the goals are, that they could work in on, et cetera. Again, it's not ideal, and I'm a hundred percent with you on that one.
I will start this in the next day or two, I have to go lay in the student, because it's a couple days before start, but I mean, just, I'm not virtually all of the folks I work with, I mean, work with students, and they seem like very quality people, at least that, you know. Given this difficult choice, had to go that way, I feel very comforted that these people aren't very good, they seem very knowledgeable, like, I feel like, okay, these are good people, like, at least we have good people in front of the kids, even the ones on the screen. They've been really good to work with.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Being noted for their business, the board will adjourn at nine oh one.